Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Mr. Catt, you wanna do the invocation, then we do the pledge of allegiance.
We're all grateful for bringing this out tonight and keeping this active the holiday weekend. We pray for those families that are having trouble, struggles, flooding. We pray for countries that are flooding. Well, we thank you for putting us in such a nice place. And we pray for all our elected officials for it, that you'll help them as they make decisions on our behalf. And we ask these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
We're gonna get right today, aren't we?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the previous minutes. Everybody's had an opportunity to read those.
Uh, yes, I'd like to... And I don't have the written version of it before me, and I asked this of Mr. Mecklen. We're approving minutes concerning the, uh, the voting on the alcohol distilled spirits in November.
Yes.
In the minutes, it refers to, it's never mentioned in there about Harrelson County is, allowing this vote, it just says.
It, one of them just says county instead of Harrelson County.
In reference to exactly who we are and what we're referencing, and I think you understand what I'm saying there. Does it not need to be specific?
Specific as to Harrelson County?
Yes, sir.
I think that almost goes without saying because, I mean, you don't have any power outside of Harrelson County.
Well, I guess I was just referring to the fact where things don't, if you got to be poignant about referencing, it's just like maps.
I think it's all...
That was going on that angle.
Yeah, my advice is always to be more specific rather than less, and to be clear in what we're doing. I'm still not sure that I understand what the exact question is, but...
I think, I think what he's asking is for me to add Harrelson, where I'm, where I'm reading, where I had written what the resolution was. I took it straight off of the paperwork. But he would like to see Harrelson County, and just, instead of it just saying the county.
Would that need to be amended, what we did last week, if we change it to Harrelson?
I, I think that you could amend that right now, as you're considering the minutes, just to amend it by adding Harrelson in front of all references to the county.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
I think that's perfectly fine.
And...
Do you wanna make a motion to change that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all the minutes, with exception of the change that was just discussed, and...
But you wanna approve it with the changes?
With the changes, yes, sir. I'm gonna approve it with the changes.
I'll second that. All in favor, show a right hand. Approval of the agenda. I'd like to add an executive session to it before item number one. So I guess that'd be...
Item number 10.
Item number 10, we're gonna move it to the front, to the top.
To discuss?
To discuss pending legal matters.
Okay.
With your attorney.
Anything else? Here none? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, show a right hand. Okay. Public participation on agenda items?
None.
Okay. Well, that move, moving item number 10 up to go first, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move we go into executive session.
With the purpose of discussing pending legal matters.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, show a right hand. We are in executive session. Come back out of executive session.
I move that we come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor, show a right hand. You wanna make the statement?
Yes, I'll, I'll just announce that there was no action taken in executive session.
Okay, we wanna back up. Alan Wiggins was on the public participation. You wanna get up, come up to the...
Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all allowing me to speak a little bit. Think I know all y'all, so y'all know me, I hope.
I do now.
I'm concerned about the item three. Now, this has nothing against Mr. Pope. I don't know if he's here or not, I don't know him. But it's against alcohol, okay? I want to make sure that's, that's first and foremost. Don't know, I don't know how much time you're gonna give me, but I'll take it the least I can. And y'all just tell me when it's time to stop, and I'll, I'll stop, okay? I've been looking over some things about alcohol. And if y'all can remember, DeFacts come to a meeting on February the 16th of 2021. They had a drug overdoses, Deas in Harrelson County was 32, suicide Deas was 23, alcohol impaired driving Deas was 24. Got up some statistics here in Harrelson County from the year, January the 1st, 2018 to January the 10th, 2021, on DUIs, there was 304 for three years. It means 101 for one year, be two a week in DUIs in Harrelson County. My understanding, it's, it's, uh, it is gonna be a bar and grill, is that correct?
I think that's the zoning, that's what it stated in the zoning.
Okay. I went to each, I went to Harrelson County, and I went to all the, well, I went to Bremen, Talaposa, and Buckhannon, city halls, to see how many businesses were in each one that would be selling alcohol, or pouring beer and wine, and distilled spirits. Harrelson County has a limp, and it's supposed to be a dry county, right? Am I correct?
No, we voted in alcohol, beer, number of years ago.
Thirty years ago, or more?
Thirty years ago.
Okay.
It's a dry for liquor, we don't do liquor.
Okay.
Do beer.
That's coming up, all right?
Yes.
That's coming up. And that's also coming up in Talaposa, as far as the distilled spirits.
We're giving the people the opportunity to vote.
Right. Okay, the businesses in Harrelson County, they're 11. Beer only, and wine only, and two wineries. Talaposa, there's 17 businesses that have license to do this. There's four pouring, and 13 beer and wine, and they have a referendum to come up in November for distilled spirits, to vote, the people vote, city. Bremen has a total of 16. Six distilled spirits, that surprised me on that, I didn't know they had that much. Two pouring, and then sales of beer and wine. Buckhannon has eight. Beer retail package is six, beer pouring two, wine retail package is four, wine pouring two, distilled spirits packaged two, distilled spirits pouring one. I didn't know that, that was a surprise to me. We know, I'm thinking of our kids. I know how I was when I was a kid, growing up. I got pretty well hooked on alcohol. July 4, 79, if I wasn't alcoholic, I was right there at the verge of it. And I've spoken about this before, and I'll try to be short on this, but I gotta tell what brought me out of it. I had a, my wife was just starting to show with a baby. And a Buckhannon policeman stopped me over around the high school. I was, my uncle used to say, "Three shades under the wind." But he didn't lock me up, he said my wife wanted to see me over at her daddy's. So I went over there, and I seen her, and she was just starting to show with my daughter. I quit. Last time I drank, but I still had a desire for it. I started going to church, and, uh, August 1981, Tuesday, 1 o'clock, I was on the mail route in Bremen, down behind the First Baptist Church, at J S Martha McKeever's house, had to get out, put the mail in, and get back in the jeep. Can't explain it, just went to audible voice, he called me by name, said, "Alan, you're still trying to do it yourself." And he showed me that I could get out of my sin through the blood of Jesus Christ. He said, "Jesus died for my sins, and I was a sinner." I said, "Oh, God, I am a sinner, and I believe Jesus died for my sins." He came in here then, and set me, he set me free from the alcohol, and had no more problem with that. I'm thinking of our kids today, how drugs, I was talking to Sheriff Williams the other day, and he said that even, there's two a week, average two a week overdose. The Georgia Baptist Convention in the year 2021 had a survey, and they got out and found out, not just Harrelson County, but the state, and you just think of the nation, how we're getting eat up. There's a vein, there's a killing vein running through our nation, which is alcohol and drugs. They done a, a survey, and it says, uh, it is a known fact that the availability of alcohol leads to the increased sales of alcohol, and that the increased sales of alcohol leads to increased consumption of alcohol, and that the increased consumption of alcohol leads to increase in potential...
Mr. Wiggins, if I could, just as the parliamentarian, I, I, you've been going on about 10 minutes, which is fine, but we've really got about a 10-minute limit here, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, I won't be able to read all this. But just say, I believe we all know somebody that has probably had an accident, drunk driving, killed. I've had some friends, relatives. I believe everybody knows somebody, maybe the... Is alcoholic. So, I want y'all to think about this, and I'll make one more statement. Everybody's, I know a lot of y'all's been on Highway 100. It's curvy, it's hilly, very hilly, from Talaposa to Cedar Town, where you get on to 27 there, before you get into Cedar Town. And I seen, I didn't see a guard rail nowhere on that road. I'm just thinking of our children, the more places we have to sell it, the more convenient it is for them to get it, and don't matter how old they are, if they want it, they can get it. I was 13 years old when I took my first drink. So, something to think about. Again, it's nothing against Mr. Pope, but the alcohol is robbing us. He's stealing, killing, and destroying families, and our children, our children, and these drugs. They're destroying our children, our grandkids. Just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the one on public participation. Okay, item number one's public hearing for proposed millage rate. I think everybody, there's a copy of the millage rate, 2021, 2022. Proposed countywide is for 22, 23, 9.642. That's down from 10.1 last year. The fire is 1.622. That's down from 1.71 last year. The recreation's up a little bit. We're at .518, we were at .50 last year. And sanitation's up just a little bit. It's at .483, and it was at .480 last year. And that gives unincorporated part a total of 12.265. That's with the SDS, the, the unincorporated millage would be 9.642. And then you add the fire, recreation, and sanitation.
And the Board of Education is proposing 14.548, which is down a little bit from the, um, it is down from 15.145.
Okay, we don't, for those of you that do not know, we don't set the school board's rate, we just have to approve it, but we have to approve what they send. Anybody got any comments? Pearl, work on it.
One, one other item on the fire, the three that do not participate with their insurance premium are at 4.112, and last year they were at 4.490, and that is Temple, Buckhannon, and Waco.
Well, no comment, let's move on to item number two. Be a vote on the millage rate. You've heard the millage rate, you've got copies before you. Any discussion?
So the recreation, I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm curious about it. Recreation went up.
Yes.
So what was the justification for that?
Gasoline lawnmowers, we bought two different, two new lawnmowers this year, are there in the budget. We were looking at a pickleball court, I guess you'd call it. And we had a batting cages, but that was a splosh thing, it just went up a little bit.
They've had a lot, a big increase in participants, and that runs up your uniforms and your, your cost for the different...
Yeah, I think we went from 200 people in pre-pandemic to like 1,200 now, participants. It's a, it was a huge increase in people, and it takes more people, more referees, more people to operate that kind of rec department. It's, it's the biggest rec department in the county now, as far as baseball, softball, football, I think.
I believe so.
I think that's the figures we got. Any more discussion? This is with the assumption that cities will sign the lost agreement, too. If the loss fails, there'll be some services cut. But this is with the loss.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the millage rate for 2022 and 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We got a motion in a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Motion, okay. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I just wanna clarify as to whether or not that motion included approval of the school board millage rate.
Yes. Do we need to amend that motion, or is that satisfactory?
As long as Allison can reflect it in the minutes that that included that.
Yes, sir.
Item number three is rezoning request by Tracy Pope, map 25-36, request to rezone from A1 to C-GB. We discussed that in the previous, in the work session. We're going for a vote tonight. I need a motion to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion we approve the rezoning request for map 25 through 36 to rezone from A1 to CGB.
I will second that motion.
So I wanna say something, 'cause I do appreciate Alan, and you're sitting back there in the back somewhere, I can see you. I do appreciate all the information you brought us today. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, I work in, in recovery with people. And as far as people who have been in or able to maintain long-term recovery, they got a relationship with God, they did. And that's what stopped it, and they had a desire to stop, and they wanted to make changes. I struggled when we voted a few weeks ago to allow the people to vote on alcohol sales. I did. But I realized that I can't be the moral police. I can have my own feelings, and I can do my very best at my job to be able to educate people and help them, but I can't police everybody. And what you're asking me to do tonight is to tell this gentleman that he can't open a business, and everybody that comes before him that's gonna have alcohol, I'm gonna punish him for other people's sins, and things that they do and bad choices they make. I don't think in all fairness I can do that. And I hope that that'll make sense to you, and I hope it makes sense to this audience. I have my personal convictions, and at times I've let them override my decisions on this board. But I have to make decisions based on allowing people to make choices. We live in a free society, that's one of the reasons we love where we live, 'cause we have choices and we can make those. So, I just need to get that off my chest, if that makes sense.
Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion? Got a motion in a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Motion, okay. Item number four, request for refund of taxes. Is Patrick Hall here tonight?
Yes.
You wanna come up?
How you doing today? Basically, what's happened is, my mom has since passed, but she, I had sent her to purchase a piece of property at the, at the auction, you know, on the courthouse steps. Instead of going to the auction, she went to the tax place and set up payment plan to pay off the taxes.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
Was it the tax sale, or a repossession sale, or...
That's where she was gonna go, was supposed to go, was to the courthouse for the tax sale on...
It was where the, where our tax commissioner was selling property for the taxes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then what she actually did was went to the tax office and set up a payment plan to pay the taxes, the back taxes on a property that somebody else owns. So, and I have all the receipts and everything in my book here. So, we paid $4,119, or $4,000, yeah, $119.72. And then this past April, I think, the, the son of the home, of the previous owner came back three years later and said that, you know, "The taxes are paid, I'll just take the property back," you know, to my, you know, "'cause the taxes are paid." Now, I'm out that $4,000 worth of taxes, and he's, has the property. And I just, I, I just wanna try to get reimbursed for whatever I can get reimbursed for, because I don't think it's right for, for me to pay his taxes and then him not, and him keep the property. I don't know what my, you know, what I have, or what I can do, but I mean, that's just...
That would be a legal question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is first I've, I've heard of the particular facts of this case, but under the facts that you outlined, it sounds to me as if you might have a claim against the owner of the property if your mom actually paid back taxes, that with that typically comes a lien on the property, and that you would have the right to proceed to recover against that property owner and against the property. You know, I would advise you to go talk to an attorney about it, to pursue your rights, but if she was paying taxes for somebody else on past due taxes, then she could have been getting a lien to recover those fines, plus a 20% penalty.
Okay. So I need, I need to go get a lawyer?
I would talk to a lawyer about it and pursue your rights. I mean, the, the question that you're presenting to the county tonight is a refund on taxes, but I would advise, at least my county commission, that those were taxes that were voluntarily paid, not illegally paid. And you do have, you do have a remedy, it's just not for the county to pay you back, because those taxes were owed by somebody. I'm sorry, your mom, it sounds like she mistakenly chose to pay them when she didn't have to.
Right.
And I regret that, but I think you got a claim against the owner of the property.
Okay, so I just need to go through an attorney and go that route instead?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, ARPA fund expenditure request. We got the, like, fire departments gave them. You got bids on fire trucks?
Uh, they gave them to me.
Okay, and then we got them on ambulances and the sheriffs.
The fire truck, the one, like the one they received last year, that company held the price at, I don't wanna say this backwards.
438.
435, 065. The, he said the trucks are currently 79,000 more, but they held last year's price.
Did you say 405 or 435?
435. Another quote they received was for 504, and the third quote was for 513.
And who was the 435? I know it's the same company we bought from last year, who was it?
Fireline.
Fireline?
Yes. Fireline Incorporated, Allen Wynder.
Oh, what? What make truck is that?
Even?
It's even one.
Okay. I think it's gonna be December delivery date. Been a good truck for you so far?
Yes, sir.
Is that including equipment, is that equipped?
Yeah, that, that was, that price there, the, uh, is...
Chief, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, that, uh, that price there's including what we paid the last time, the quip, everything, so.
Are we gonna do these one at a time, or all at once? I mean, I guess we need to go through them one at a time, don't we? I think we need to do them one at a time. Okay. Well... Need a motion for one truck, two trucks, three trucks, no trucks, whatever.
We had made this discussion months ago, if we received the money, and we did. And glad we did for all of us. So I would, I would be glad to make a motion that we buy one truck from Fireline at the quoted price of $435,065.
Oh, she, 435, yeah, $65. Any more discussion?
How many fire trucks do you need, chief?
By now, we got two. It's totally gone out of service. And so we're in two reserves. One at Buck Cannon. It's 30-year-old truck. This past year, we was, we spent over 150,000 in maintenance. Two trucks would take the maintenance cost down significantly. That would give us a good spare of six new trucks. And I think that would put the budget, because we are spending a lot of maintenance. And that's what we spent this past year. And, you know, I think it would, these two trucks would go into, go here, one in Buck Cannon. They've lost their truck. The one that we had was one that Carol gave us, and you can't, that truck's out of service now. And then Waco's trucks was bought in 2000, and it's, uh, I'm going to get a fan clutch put on it right now. And it's just, uh, you know, it would get a good variety of new trucks throughout the county to help. And it would save, I know it would save on maintenance. Because we would get rid of them two that's down, plus probably one more.
I can appreciate very much, but I remember at one of our meetings here recently, and I believe it was Commissioner Brown that mentioned, tell me if I'm wrong. There's other thing, we got a lot of, you know, monies that we're talking about tonight. It's all in public safety, and I fully get that. But there's a lot of other things in this county, and not slacking any of them, and especially public safety. But we need to be able to take a look to see what other areas that this money may be needed as much, if not more than, to be fared off throughout the county. And that's why I made the motion of one truck and. That's the reason I did that.
Someone second David's motion to buy a fire truck? I want to second David's motion to buy a fire truck.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, one fire truck? Show a right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ambulances. I didn't ask any opposed.
Okay, we received from AmbuCare, um, three quotes. And from these three quotes, they have from 10-8, one entire ambulance with all the equipment that they would need would be 380,000, and that also is a three-year warranty on all the equipment products. Quote from 10-8 Fire Equipment, they are at 304 each, but this, I don't know if this includes all the same equipment. It does. Okay. And then the third one is an Osage Warrior Truck for $296.4. They were recommending the Demir's Truck because it is a better truck. Would you like to come explain it better than me? It was the one, it was, the truck itself is 251,676.
It was the least one out of the three. And we've got one that we've been operating since 17, a Demir's that's here. It's got 430-something thousand on it. If any of you wanted to see it, be glad for you to. And if the question is, hey, Bill, AmbuCare, do y'all have the truck we approved last year, about the same time, or it's October? I'm being told December. Instead of being told you're waiting on them due to a chip, they're also saying door handles now. I, I don't know what the problem is, but they're holding, holding our hands tied. So all the equipment has come in for last year's ARC money that you approved. And I gave you the quote last year. I was trying to do all four zones equally. In talking to Mr. Chairman, I've reduced that down to two additional instead of three, if that could be considered by the board. That's with the equipment, the maintenance, that brings a total of 381,7855, a total of 760,35710. That's for two units.
How much was it?
Three, no, 760,35710. That's with the equipment. And David, they're telling me that we're probably looking honestly late 24 on this. They're so backed up. They've got, Bortough County just purchased, I want to say, four units, and they're telling them late 24.
Did we do one or two back in the spring?
Did, did one, Mr. Sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then we did the one, but then we bought, what do we, you bought some equipment to go in the other one, right?
You bought the Lucas CPR machines for all five trucks.
Okay.
And y'all, each zone, being Waco, Talapusa, Buck Cannon, Bremen, those have been, they've saved lives.
Okay.
They have saved lives. And what this would do is the truck that y'all approved last year will come to Buck Cannon. This, these two trucks would go to Talapusa and Waco. As far as our section, I'm glad for the fire department. I'm glad for the sheriff's department, law enforcement, that they were included in this ARC second phase. Because in the first one, y'all will remember, it, you know, the other side of the fence, the other public safety members were not included. But they're still got this zoned in on treatment and transport and curing or immunizations of COVID. And y'all, we went probably April through June and transported zero COVIDs. Now we're up to transporting on average, not possible, but confirmed, six a week. Our hospitals are getting back full. And so we're having to take those units out, not having one to switch into for over an hour and a half to decline. We requested mutual aid last month, 28 times from Carroll County, from Paulding County, 17 times, Cleveland, four. So it's over once a day that we're having to bring in resources from outside the county.
Would you be retiring any trucks with these?
Yes, sir. I've got a 20.
Just the one or?
Yes, sir. Definitely one, because I'd really like to get us from six. And retiring one, it is a 2013. It has over 580-something thousand. It's on its second engine, back 100-something thousand ago. I'd retire that one and keep the Talapusa truck as a spare, putting us up to seven reserves. Because what we try to do is before we call Carol, before we call Pope, before we call Paulding or Cleveland, is myself or our director, Mitch Golden, hey, can you come run a call with me? We're trying to run it out of a spare. But the numbers are still there. And like I said, none, none of us are asking for anything for us to put on a shelf and go, look how pretty. It's to serve your citizens. And this was an approved Phase One ARC funding from the very beginning, and I, I listed it just as we did the first one. We just took our Phase Two request from three trucks, trying to say, we want to do what's best with y'all's money, the Fed's money, not increase the contract. I was asked by Commissioner Tarpley to extend that contract. We did for another three years at zero increase to all of us taxpayers. This is designated funds to treat and prevent the spread of COVID, and this would help us in doing that.
I can speak for the board. That's a little more than what we thought it was going to be. And we take those bids and let all the commissioners look at it, and then we'll vote at the next meeting on the ambulance. Good with that?
Sure. Would you like me to reach out to those gentlemen and ask them for 30 days, will they hold the price?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
The work session will be in two weeks, and then I'd give everybody time to look this over.
Okay. Yes, sir. And you've got everything from units to equipment, and it will match up to what Phase One was. In looking at this, the cost increase was $43,000. So it was about $23.5 per truck. And I wish, good Lord knows, I wish I could say, no, we just did this 11 months ago. Can't you do that? They've got us in the palm of their hand.
Will we let you know something definite at the next?
I'll see you in two weeks. Yes, sir. Thank you.
The sheriff's vehicles.
Uh, they have Allen Vigil Ford at 48,933 per car. Wade Ford at 45,769. Tech 84 at, oh, no, that's something different. Okay, on the three cars. And then the quote from Brandon Ford Company that was received into this office was 35.2 without a spotlight, 35.7 with a spotlight. And I, I'm not able to speak to what, what's different with the quotes. That would need to be the sheriff or.
Okay, the sheriff, you just got two bids. We actually got.
Three. I think there was three.
We, uh, we reached out to five different vendors on this right here, and, uh, there you go. We reached out to five different vendors. The only one that didn't give us one, we got two in the mix. I talked to Brandon Ford, and he never delivered his, but it was, uh, the, um.
That's the one we got, the 35.7 Ford?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And I'll talk on that in a minute. The 47,969 from Pioneer Ford. He didn't send an actual bid quote. It was 47,969, so that was three. But we checked out with, uh, we checked with Brandon Ford. I talked to Jamie Reed down there. I've done talked to him twice. He still hasn't got me a bid price. The, the one that you had talked to him about and showed was a 22 Ford interceptor. These bids are for a 2023 model. Automatically, the 2023's went up 5,000 in price. So they went up from the 35,700. The, the 22 Ford here on this form right here, and I don't know when this, this proposal is good for. They're only good for a certain amount of time. But it has a 3.3-liter, the V6 engine, and 285 horsepower engine versus the twin turbo is what we, what we need to do our job with. It, it equips the vehicle better. It makes the vehicle run better. It's got a bigger, heavier duty of transmission in the vehicle, and it's all around a, a better vehicle. The quotes we got were for the 2023 model vehicles, not the 2022. That's the ones we got, we bought last year, were splash money. That's what we have now. As far as the price on the 2023, if you look at that price, and I'll have to get back with him to check. If he's got 2022s and he has a turbo, because that ain't but an $840 difference in the motor, the setup of the vehicle, we can look, you know, to do that because it would be cheaper. But when they, when we quoted this right here, they didn't quota for 2022. They quoted us for 2023.
When you, we didn't have a bid, but.
No, we, we received it in, I believe it was last week.
Yeah. That's what he quoted.
Like I said, the only difference in that right there, as far as looking at that, you can, if you look, when we do quotes, I try to go over my form and look at this form right here. I think we've got, we added about seven things to it, which equaled up to about 200 or 2,000-something dollars. The biggest difference is, is when we design these vehicles for our use, we look at the, the repair factor. Last year, we spent 105,000 just on vehicle maintenance because of the aging fleet, tiring up, putting motors in the cars and things like this. With a new car, it's just like the 2022s, we got, we got the five-year warranty, bumper to bumper. It averages around 2,400-something dollars for that vehicle price to get a five-year, 100,000 mile warranty on it. Motor, transmission, rear end, stuff that we constantly have to fight to replace in our vehicles now. The concept is, at the end of this four-year lease, I mean, four-year purchase, you, when a vehicle reaches 100,000 miles, you want to get, take that vehicle off the road and get rid of it and sell it at its premium price. You might be able to go to 125,000. But to keep your fleet, it's part of a fleet management program, and we got a lot of vehicles, and we got to be spot on with this. So by doing this right here, not only do we get a current year model, because this is already September 23, we're going into 24, but we get a newer model with extra price. And like I said, I talked to him today, the base price on the 2023, as of today, for a 23 Ford Explorer is $44,000. That's what he told me. He said that's what his cost was, 44,000. We're done, we're doing five vehicles. I put in here for a, we reached out and got three, which these are government bids. On the government bids, they usually range between 3% to 7% profit is what I found out. As far as building the car, putting the needed items from the wraparound bumper, protect the front end, inside the equipment, we were looking at, come out Metropolitan Communications, $6,696. We reached out to two other companies, one in Paulding County, or both of them in Paulding County, one in Hiram, and we never received a bid back, and I don't know why. It's just they're so inundated. But Metropolitan does our work now. They do pretty much all the work around here locally. It's a very good company. So you would take the base, you would take the price of the vehicle, add that to it, and then we're back up around. If you look at the Wade Ford, at 45, 45,769, that would put us back up right around 52,000 on a fully equipped vehicle. Questions?
So you mentioned that this bid that came in, that I think we just heard for 35.7, add 5,000 to that, right?
Based on, that's going from a 22 model to a 23, you would add 5,000 to it, based on what I was told today, because the 23 models automatically buy forward. I listened to the fire trucks. I listened to the ambulances and stuff like that. This is across the board. And I'm actually, as much money as they're spending, I should have said, I need five more cars just to equal one fire truck. It would get us down the road. But yes, ma'am.
So then if we added your 6,696 to 40,700, we're looking at 47,396 would be the best price, right? Roundabout. My numbers could be off a little bit.
Where did you get the 40,000 from? Where'd you get that from?
Well, I took that lowest bid of 35,700 and added 5,000 to it.
What's the, why would you want 23 models above 22s? Can you even tell the difference?
You know, that's, that's, I don't. I got 22 models now.
They got a lot full of 22s down there.
They do. But the way we design them, because my office stays in these vehicles 12 hours a day, roughly 10 hours a day. 10 hours a day. That is the office.
These are police cars. They're the same cars Tallapoosa uses.
Yes, sir.
Same ones Bremen uses, same ones Carroll County uses. I mean, explain the difference. Why would we want to pay $9,000 more for a turbo?
You keep saying $9,000, Chairman, that, that's inaccurate. Right here, I want to say, I got two requirements. I got two requirements. Trying to change the fleet to the color, the car not gray. Two, is have the 3.0 motor in, which is the turbo charge, is the higher output motor. And on these, one of these estimates right here, uh, my requirements on it right there, it's about an 800 to a $900 change on the motor. If I can get a 22, if I call him back, and I tried to call him more ago, if I can call him back and he's got 22's other than the color, let's see what his price is. If I can get the 3.0 with that right there, yes, sir, I'll do that right there.
Why? I thought the 3.3 was on 280 horsepower?
It's 185 horsepower, or 285 horsepower versus the 400 horsepower. With the body, the weight, and the, the chassis of it right there, it gives you, it's a better response vehicle with the power. Uh, and on the end quote, uh, it was supposed to be for the 2023, they were supposed to be ordered by the, I think, the 19th of this month. Ford has changed that date till Friday. Friday is the last day to get this in, to get the 2023. And it's my understanding, don't you're closed out of it, and you, you got, it just makes it tougher when you go shop, try to find it. Actually, I will add this, the $45,000 quote for this 23 is actually cheaper than what we paid for the, the 22 model, than we got from the, the Ford place there. I think it was 49 at Dawn was here. I think we checked that the other day. They, they're cheap, well, they're all door cheap, although the price went up on the, um, on the, on the, the vehicle itself.
Sheriff, you said Brandon has them for 35,7?
According to the document, Chairman Ridley. But I, I done talked to him twice.
Not according to Chairman Ridley, according to the facts that Brandon, that the Ford place sent, that sent...
It's Monday.
You know, all I can, all I did was read the paper.
Yes, sir. And that's the one you gave it to him, that's the one I'm reflecting to.
Yeah. So it's not my price. It's sent from...
And you know, like, like I said, I, I done talked to the, the guy that sent it to, I done talked to him twice, and one, it didn't come up in conversation, and two, uh, he never told me that he had 2022 of what we're looking for, and I only got two requirements, the motor and the color. I can, I can go back if I have to, but now you're changing up your fleet, now you're getting all different colors.
He asked what color, and that's what I've been seeing with your vehicles.
Okay.
So what year is that? The 35,7 is what year?
I think it's the 22.
2022. So that's where the five, I guess, comes in, that I always added up, was if we got 2023, you said add five to that, right?
If you, if you got the 23 model, you would add five to it because of the, the year difference. That's, it was, I talked to him this afternoon on the phone, it's $44,000. But even if you add the five to it, rank it up, and then when you added the, the, on the Wade Ford, when you added the five-year, 100,000 mile warranty with the seven different things that we put on there, spotlight on the driver's side, to whatever the little was, the seven, it comes up 45,000 from junk change.
Are you telling us, uh, if we were to make a motion and agree to buy you the, uh, 22 cars at 35,7, uh, are you in agreeance to accepting those?
If it's 3.0, if it's a 3.0 engine.
Well, if it's not?
Then we're gonna have to back up and punt football.
Well, then, okay.
Um, can I ask y'all a question? I just sit here and listen to prices going up, and we done our due diligence on this right here, trying to get the price down, getting new vehicles where we're saving money in the long run. But as sheriff of this county, and I, I know what we need down here based on what our mission is, but you're, you're trying to box me into one thing. I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing here?
We're, we're trying to save money. We're trying...
Get your patrol cars.
We're trying to get your patrol cars, but we don't, then we gonna put you in, um, Cadillacs, and I use that term loosely because I'm just saying, top of the line, um, you got five cars that took a year to get here because you wanted turbos in them, and we allowed you to get those, uh, or you got them, uh. We call this one, and, uh, you wanna look at a gift horse in the mouth and turn it down, I, I, I question your thoughts on that, but, uh, we can check and see if the 35,7, uh, comes with your quote twin turbo, but, uh, um, to run that kind of vehicle up and down these roads, sir, that just tells me you want to run everybody everywhere. And, uh, and I'm not getting into chases and killing innocent people. Um, and so I will make a motion that we, uh, would buy the, the 2022's at the 35,700 dollars regardless of whether they got turbos or the standard, uh, police interceptors in them.
I'd like to ask a question that probably we should have asked before we began this discussion. Does anybody on this board remember how much money that we have to spend?
Yes.
Two million and...
2.8. And with all three departments right here, what he's asking for are five, he's asking for one, and I'm asking for two from three, it's 1.8. Two fire trucks, two fire trucks, five to two, that puts you at 1.884. That's almost a million dollars that is in excess of ARP funding for the county with all what they have said, the parent buildings doing this and whatever. Almost gives you a million dollars over.
2.888, to be exact.
Then 1.884 would be over a million dollars.
And, uh, also, I don't know if you know this, but the governor's gonna give more money for broadband, only this time where we had 2.4 million for 24 million, we had a 10% match. This time it's gonna be a 30% match. Uh, that's gonna take 7.2 million if they get to 24 million, which they probably won't. But we sure don't wanna lose broadband, uh, because we didn't have the money to cover. So that's one reason we're being careful with our money. You know, there's other things besides public safety. The, uh, and public safety is necessary, one of the biggies, but broadband is, you're gonna have to have broadband if you operate in a few years. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a necessity, just like telephone and the collides.
Chairman Tarpley, I appreciate your sentiment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, sir. Uh, going back to what you said, no, sir, we don't wanna run around the county, run 100 mile an hour, we're gonna go, we're here to protect lives, and that's exactly what we wanna do. When it comes to these vehicles right here and we look at them, and I don't, I'm not up here trying to be disrespectful, nothing like it, but I don't see none of y'all working in public safety. You don't come down there, you don't serve equipment, and the things, what I'm trying to say by saying that is, is this is the spec that I put up. It's just like you in your business, Ms. Jamie and her business, you know what you need when you have a look. All I'm asking for is, is, is two things. One, the motor, which I can show you right here, it's an 848 to 900 something dollar difference change. It's a bike change. That's all I'm asking for, because it produces more power with that vehicle, and it helps out.
What about let's get the firm price on it?
Sheriff, if we, I mean, if we bought the $35,000, and we put the, the motor in there, that'd just be 36.5, right?
If we can get in...
If we can get the 22.
If we can get it with 3.0, I'll take it all day long. I appreciate it, but I don't...
That's what I was going for. Let's go ahead and, uh, can you call in the morning and get the bid from, uh...
Brandon Ford.
Brandon Ford at Unadilla?
And I'll take my motion off the table then.
Okay.
So quote the same vehicle with the turbo engine?
Yes, the 3.0. Ms. Allison.
Okay.
Ask people Jamie Reed on it.
100 horse, that's who he's supposed to, the Ford, that's who we talked to.
Any other questions?
And this was...
Thank y'all.
Five trucks, correct, Sheriff? Or I mean, five vehi- three, five?
Five vehicles, and then once he comes back out, I run the numbers based if I went off the Wade Ford, 262,000, that's, that's fully equipped, that's built in the whole for five vehicles.
Okay, five trucks, okay.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Item number six, increasing the assessors board from three members to five, that caused a revolution, and we discussed that in previous work sessions, and we either need to do it, or, or, whatever you think. I think it would give a broader area of the county if we had more than three people on that board. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I'll just, we, we talked about this, so I'll make a motion that we increase the number of people on the board.
And what would that number go to, sir?
Five, okay.
And so that'll be a resolution, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do you second it, Dave?
Uh, yes, sir.
All in favor, show a right hand. Okay. We're gonna skip number seven. That's, uh, I think it's, we need to wait and see what the city of Buckcannon does on that.
Yeah, I think it's probably appropriate to move to table that item.
So I make a motion that we table that item and wait for the city of Buckcannon to make a decision.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Employee raises. Let me tell you my thoughts on that. I would like to get with each department head and let them do an evaluation on each employee and bring it back to us, and then at a retreat or a work session, we sit down with them and go over each one of them and give out raises accordingly. I don't wanna go across the board because, uh, a percentage raise awards some people, and it also awards people that don't do their jobs. And I don't wanna do a bonus because that don't raise the pay scale. The, the last three years, we've done bonuses, and the hourly wage rate is still basically the same. I would like to get it up, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, have the department heads to do evaluations and then bring those before the board in an executive session.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, show a right hand. Okay, item number one, now, resolution to modify moratorium on acceptance of zoning applications. Do you wanna...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, let me, I just saw that on the agenda there, and, uh, that's actually, uh, titled wrong. It's a resolution to modify moratorium on acceptance of subdivision applications rather than zoning applications. And, uh, let me explain what that is, is that, uh, a month ago, you extended a moratorium on acceptance of subdivision applications under our subdivision ordinance. Uh, and that was for a 90-day extension, which we're now 30 days into, so you have 60 days left while we're working on a new subdivision ordinance. Uh, there is a moratorium on that. Uh, in the planning and zoning meeting last week, we had a number of situations identified that was causing hardship to a number of individual property owners. Uh, the situations were where, uh, family, a parent wanted to deed some land to one of their children to build a house on, that was being stopped because of this. Uh, you had situations where there was a court order to divide property that was being stopped by the moratorium, and a couple, several other different minor situations, whereas the intent of the moratorium was to prevent mass residential subdivisions until we get that subdivision ordinance straightened out. This modification here sets up a process for the Planning and Zoning Commission to accept, uh, a request for exceptions, exceptions from the moratorium that fit within those small category of minor subdivisions, really dividing the property in two rather than mass residential subdivisions. And, uh, if the Planning and Zoning Commission, our Planning and Zoning Staff believes that it falls within that limited exception, then they will indicate that they are okay with that, uh, exception. That would go to the chair of the Board of Commissioners, and if he approves the Planning and Zoning Staff's recommendation, then they could issue the permit, uh, in those special exceptions. If the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, uh, then the applicant would have the right to still come before the board to petition for an exception. But this really is only gonna be in place for another 60 days because our moratorium runs out then. We're trying to, to solve those immediate unintended consequences that we caused for small property owners who wanted to give property to their kids.
Any more questions? Need a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the resolution.
I'll second that.
All in favor, show a right hand. Public participation on non-agenda items. Need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?